...in attendance to Rise and Join Us in Singing All Canada. Thank you to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio and to the National Film Board for the images of our country. We will move on to the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. Councillor McLean.
Mayor, I move the minutes of the city council meeting held November 17, 2014, be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like they are correct and accurately reflect what happened? I don't see anybody ringing in, so they must be. I will call for the vote then to adopt that set of minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. We'd look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Logan.
Move we adopt the agenda circular.
Thanks very much, Councillor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. That motion carries as well, and this brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting to be joined by guests either announced or anybody in the community that would just like to come forward. We did have one delegation that let us know in advance that they were going to be here tonight, and we have a delegation from RBC to make a presentation to the City of Grand Prairie. Gentlemen, if you'd like to come up and join us at the presenter's table here, I'll turn the micro on. You could introduce yourselves and just make your presentation.
Well, thank you for having us here. I'm Komele Sini. I'm a financial planner with RBC. This is Nick. He's our assistant branch manager. And we're here to present you with a cheque for $15,000 to help, what's the right word for it, let kids play, I guess?
So we're here just on behalf of sort of the Learn to Play event that was recently held in Grand Prairie, and it's part of the RBC's Kids' Pledge where we are donating $100 million over a period of five years. In the ideal of hoping, of helping 100 million kids around the world in a variety of different ways, but this most recent Learn to Play Day, just October 29th, if, I'm terrible with dates, but if that date is the recent Saturday, I know it was, as Bill, as our mayor Bill Given was saying, was an interesting success, and we saw, courtesy of him actually, many photos from the event, so that's basically it. You know, I know this year 180 different organizations and communities throughout Canada are receiving a total of $1.6 million, so.
Gentlemen, thanks very much for being here, and thank you more for supporting, I think it was Try a Day, Councillor Clayton. Councillor Clayton is the city's representative on the Grand Prairie Sports Council that put together the event, and from all reports, I think it was a resounding success, so thank you very much for RBC's support of that event and support of these efforts dedicated towards the youth in our community. So I'll come around. I don't know if any councillors had any questions or comments for the gentleman. Councillor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of Grand Prairie Sports Council. I know everything that I've seen so far, I don't have total numbers. There was over 30 sports at one point. Some of the facilities, due to the weather, had to be closed, and some events were cancelled. But everything that I've heard and seen in social media has been a resounding success. I know my children in particular took place in it, and they thought it was excellent. They tried sports they normally wouldn't try, and also were invited to try other sports while they were at different facilities, so it was a huge success, and would truly thank you for your support.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I guess, gentlemen, that's the opportunity for me to come around, and we can do the cheque. I think you handed off your camera. I see David's got the city camera, and I'm happy to come around and accept that on behalf of the city right now.
Thank you.
Thanks again, gentlemen. Much appreciated. Appreciate your support of these community initiatives. Are there any more delegations that wanted to bring the city a cheque? I don't see anybody else rushing forward. In all seriousness, though, you don't have to show up with $15,000. Council does have this opportunity every two weeks for anybody in the community to come forward and make a presentation to council or a representation of a community issue, so we want to ensure that the public knows that that opportunity is available. And I don't see anybody else coming forward, so I'll close the delegation. Part of our agenda, we had no public hearings tonight, no unfinished business, no reports, so we go straight into committee business, and starting off with 9.1, the Community Growth Committee meeting from November 18th, and Councillor O'Toole, I think that was your meeting?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd like to make a motion that council receive the minutes for the Community Growth Committee meeting held November 18th, 2014.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Everyone's had a chance to read those minutes. Does everything look like it's in order? Looks like my council colleagues are saying that it is, so I'll call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole, anything you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
There was, yes, Mayor Given, thank you. There was one request for an approval of a communication tower, and I know communication towers aren't necessarily the thing that we want to look at, but we all like to use our cellphones, and 25 years ago, like I always tell people, that was never even in the planning situation. But we did have a great discussion, and there will be another communication tower that was approved going up next year, and it'll be a tower that other agencies, other communication companies will be able to rent space off of, so that was one of the things that was brought up. Also, there was a request for proposals on the review of the land use, bylaw sign regulation, and Councillor Clayton brought up we should look into liquid natural gas and compressed natural gas for something that the city could use, and maybe possible fleet vehicles and other opportunities. And that would be it, thank you.
Great, thanks for the update. Councillor O'Toole, we'll move on to the Community Living Committee from November 18th, and Councillor Radburn, I think that was yours?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held November 18th, 2014.
Thanks, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote to adopt them. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn, anything to highlight?
We have two motions, and then a couple of highlights. First of all, I would move council support the letter of intent to bid on hosting the 2017 Alberta 55-plus Summer Games. The letter of intent will come from both. This will be a partnership of the county and the city, and this is just a letter to support the letter of intent.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Radburn.
To seek the bid.
Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn?
So the request, just to tie that one up, they will be seeking some funding to support the bid package, and they will be coming to Pursuit of Excellence Committee for that consideration. Second motion is that I move council direct the mayor write a letter to the Ministry of Culture regarding the Alberta Foundation for the Arts Funding. This is a result of a report we received outlining the changes to the Alberta Foundation of the Arts Funding, and that, I think, basically provided Evan Calgary access to funds previously they didn't have access to, and since that, those funds have not increased, that decreases the pie, so to speak, for other smaller municipalities in the province.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that motion? I'll just inform council that I do have a meeting scheduled with our two MLAs for later this week. There is a community member who's also concerned about this issue and was interested in advocating, and so I'm going to be joining along with him to present to our two MLAs. So that's already in the works, and we'll follow up with this, letter to the appropriate minister and our MLAs. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. There we go, and Councillor Radburn, anything else from that?
Thank you, a couple of things. Just so we did receive a presentation from, regarding the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival that hopefully will be presented in Grand Prairie. We have suggested that they make representation or request of the Arts Development Committee for festival funding and to the city for sponsorship monies, so that remains to be seen, but it was an excellent presentation. Secondly, we, committee directed men to bring back additional information relating to the youth certification initiative of Volunteer Services Bureau. And finally, we received a letter from the Downtown Association recommending an adopt a park possibility. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Radburn. I see one person in the queue. Councillor O'Toole, did you have something on that? Okay, I'm well here. Okay. Okay, so there's inadvertent, an inadvertent button push, no problem. We can clear that, we can clear that queue. We'll move to 9.3, the Community Safety Committee meeting from November 25th, and Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council receive the minutes, Community Safety Committee meeting held November 25th, 2014.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? I don't see anybody ringing in, so we'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor McLean, you've got one piece of business coming up?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Also, I move the council adopt the 102, 102nd Street Traffic Study.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on Councillor McLean's motion? Again, seeing none, everybody must have had their fill of the plan at the committee meeting. It was a fairly detailed presentation. I will call for the vote then. That motion carries. Councillor McLean, anything else you wanted to highlight from this meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of things. One, there was a bylaw, C-12, 26 animals in responsibility ownership for racing pigeons, to have a permit section that will allow for possible exemptions to four animal limit. The majority felt it was okay to delete the bylaw and look over that, and we'll see how that goes, if there's 40 pigeons allowed or 100, we don't know yet. And the other one was, I really liked is when Fire Chief Dan Mew comes to speak on the fire department, he was speaking on, about how staff are dispatched in vehicles to help people in motor vehicle accidents within our city boundaries, and this is very important because if it's yourself or your children or someone you know, you want them to have the best care they can and get appropriate help as soon as possible. So I was glad he came, and he also said he'd be bringing a report back on the emergency medical response. We all remember when we had a peak ambulance where they just dropped a chest without saying anything, and then they brought it back online. That did have some implications, and we're looking forward to that report. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. That would take us to 9.4, Corporate Services Committee meeting. Councillor Tarrant, I think you did a stand-in on that one, didn't you?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to move that the November 25th Corporate Services Committee meeting minutes be approved.
Thanks very much, Councillor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Councillor Tarrant, I think there's one piece of business?
Yep, so we have, I will move that council award RFP 25 to 15-14 to Liberty Security as the solution provider for the video surveillance system in the amount of $334,986,000 and six cents exclusive of GST.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate, or do you care to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I'm speaking to it. So the system would focus on four of our facilities, and it'll be providing a video surveillance there, and part of the system will be, it'll be an improvement over the past system in that we had several different video providers, and this will sort of coordinate the system a little bit better and provide better coordination overall.
Thanks, Councillor Tarrant. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question that might be directed to Kent. This money's already been allocated in the budget. This is not in the budget we're going to be looking at next council.
Mr. Anderson?
That is correct. These funds exist in the current budget, not the future budget.
Thanks, Councillor McLean, for the question. One other question that I asked at committee that, or sort of musing that I had at the committee that was answered really well by administration was that these cameras, these video surveillance systems, are actually a part of the recommendations that were done on crime prevention through environmental design, so that a SEPTED audit was conducted on each of these facilities, and so there were a number of other recommendations of physical improvements that could be made. So I was really pleased to see that administration is looking at those types of physical improvements and not just relying on video surveillance technology. I appreciate the fact that they're doing sort of both parts there, which was really good news. Any other discussion or debate? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Tarrant, anything else to highlight?
Yeah, there's a few things that happened at the meeting. We met with the auditors, we were there, and we were able to chat with him a little bit more about how we want the yearly audit to be done. We asked them to focus a little bit more on the Eastlink Centre and to dig down a little bit more, particularly on the financial systems, part, portion of the review. We also were presented with an update for the Eastlink Centre, and it's good to see that things are moving along, that the deficit has been reduced, and that there's been steps to, steps being made in the future to reduce that even more, and we find ourselves in a better position in the new year. And lastly, we had, were presented with the third quarter unaudited financial statements, and so it looks like we're on track to post a small surplus at the end of the year, $250,000, so that was also good news for the committee to hear.
Thanks very much, Councillor Tarrant. I think that deals with all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence tonight. We did have the one delegation, and maybe we could have a motion to receive for information, the presentation from the RBC delegation. Councillor McLean?
Mayor, I make that motion receive for information for delegation from RBC for the check total $15,000.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We had known notices motion, and it would take us to council member reports. Councillor Radburn, I think you said that you had Downtown Association and then also you could follow it up with the Grand Spirit report.
Thank you, Mayor Given. November 26, Downtown Association Board of Directors meeting. Just kind of three highlights. We had a debrief on the Downtown Enhancement Project consultation session, and thought it was useful and just encouraged continued coordination and communication among city and the utility partners in this project. We approved the 2015 budget, and we approved some RFPs dealing with flower baskets, planters, and planter watering. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Councillor Radburn, and Grand Spirit.
And finally, Grand Spirit Foundation, we approved our 2015 budget, election of officers, and return to the vice chair role and labor management rep. We passed our three-year business plan. We had staff reports from the general manager, the finance person, and the maintenance director, and we approved a non-union wage and benefit package. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Councillor Radburn? Nighthawk Area Recreation Board, Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to report that the Nighthawk facility has a lot of snow right now. We're just waiting for the weather to warm up, and things will be full steam ahead. The hill opened approximately two weekends ago with a sort of a big community event that had a huge turnout, sort of get the rust off your rails, so to speak, it was called, and there was great success and good corporate involvement in that event. And this coming weekend starts the Northern Alpine Ski Team Evaluation Days, so hopefully it warms up so the ski team can get out there. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton, and Councillor O'Toole, Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. We did have a meeting, I met with George Jacob today, and I asked what was going on with the museum, and I can tell you that the boardroom and the facility is in pretty good shape right now. PCL, the builders, are making plans to be off the site here by the end of December. I know a lot of the staff that work for PCL will be leaving here in the next 10 days. We had one little bit of an issue. We asked for an emergency generator, and they sent us a temporary emergency generator when actually we wanted a generator for onsite. The manufacturers made the error when shipping, and so we're not actually able to take part of the building until all that's complete, so I guess we'll be in there for January 1st. We are having a meeting here on Thursday, so we've got permission from PCL to go into the building, but technically we can't open it to the public or anything like that until we have the full generator in there, not just an emergency generator. Other than that, that's it.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. That would take us to council member roundtable. Councillor O'Toole, do you want to start us with roundtable, I guess, since we're there?
Sir, I actually submitted a report to administration. I attended 13 items, or 13 events. I do want to highlight just a couple if I could. We did have our third parks naming event last week. It was a huge success once again, and the next day I attended a reception for Tina Martell exhibition at the Art Grand Prairie Gallery, and it was called "Not in Pink," and basically it's kind of an emotional event where this lady has suffered breast cancer, and it basically went through from the time she first found out to the surgeries and after that. She is an artist by trade, I guess you might say. She's a teacher, instructor at the GPRC, and it's kind of a humbling experience to see all this, but I attended that with some other council members here in town. I'm sure that'll be in their roundtable as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. You know, I attended five events over the course of the past two weeks. It was mostly budget-heavy, but I'm just going to highlight a couple. As Councillor O'Toole said last week, we had our Parks Name Event, the third of which. Tomorrow's our final Parks Naming Event, and so I'd just like to shout it out there to whoever's watching and whoever's in the room here today, that these are incredible events, that the recipients of the parks and their names being given to their family members and friends has been truly an honor. They're emotionally moved and definitely buoyed by the spirit. A lot of people said this is the best legacy project we could have ever decided to do, so I encourage all members of council and the public to come check it out, like it's a, these are great events. And then I just wanted to highlight where I was at shortly before council meeting today here. We were at an accessibility advisory meeting and dinner, and I had the opportunity to eat my dinner with certain disabilities. I think I went blind, and I also went with some really heavy wristbands on. They didn't look as good as Councillor Radburn's, but I tell you, a lot of people, sometimes we take for granted the good lives that we have to live and stuff like that. It really was a humbling experience as I scraped the plate looking for my food, unable to see where my food was and stuff like that. Makes you appreciate what we have and appreciate the adversity that people overcome in order to live their lives healthily. So kudos to the organizers of that event, and to all members of council who were there as well.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. Councillor Logan?
Two things I'd like to just comment quickly on. The first is the operating budget that we undertook in the last couple of weeks. I've commented on the capital budget and how well I thought the process went and the results went, and I feel I have to say the same thing about the operating budget. It was a massive task to undertake, and I think council bore down on it very well with great support from administration, and somewhat to my surprise, because there's always some comments on a budget, surprisingly small number of comments, feedback to me from the community, and they're split down the middle with those that have complaints and those that think reasonable job was done, but way too small a sample to take anything from. And that leads me to the second thing, which is the feedback on the new snow removal system, which certainly got its test in the last few days. By a small margin, the feedback I got was more in favor of the old system than the new system, but the actual number of complaints was so small that it was a meaningless number. What I thought was really good, though, was the compliments I got on the work of the crews, and so kudos to our department for the work they did. I got a lot, not a lot, comparative to the number of comments I got, I got quite a few comments that were just straight positive.
Thanks very much, Councillor Logan. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. If you were here, I wrote down on November 18th, I attended the Gala for North Spirit Light Show unveiling. Councillor Radburn, his wife Donna over there as well, as have my wife Tina and Kendra and Kara, and we were very fortunate to be on, they have a lot of horse, two horses per ride carriage, whatever they call it, and a lot of companies came in and donated money to rebuild some, and we actually be a fellow named Gord France, used to be a councillor in the city of Grand Cash. He lives up here in the county in the Grand Prairie, and we had a good talk. The wife knows him very well from Grand Cash, and a very good fellow and a businessman from the town of Grand Cash, so kudos for the Gala of North Spirit. It's grown quite a bit over the last few years. It's no longer a small show. There's tons of people going to this event to check it out, and I think it's beautiful, and we'll be going back one or two more times before it closes. As well, on 19/20/21, council the whole budget planning. I have to say it was very well done by administration, but I am looking forward to coming to the next council and discussing. November 24th, also attended Downtown Project Council Workshop. On November 25th, I attended the Governor's Workshop for the West Quarter Portable Water Transmission Line, basically bring water to the town of Wembley. I'm all for bringing water to the town of Wembley. I'm not for industrial growth on our borders and saying it's not for you to touch, so good for safe, clean drinking water, but not for tax-based city Grand Prairie. November 26, I also attended a pre-reception for Tina Martell's exposition opening, "Not in the Pink" at the Art Gallery. I got to say that, as Councillor O'Toole said, and Councillor Radburn was there as well, it was a great event. It was the first one I ever attended at the arts facility for exposition, and not only I got from the pictures and everything that they had on the art was her stories and different times in the day she wrote about situations and how she felt. I found that the most important. So, and then November 27th, we had a meeting at GPRC Board at the college, and then we had on November 20th, the council, the whole meeting. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the Northern Spirits Light Show unveiling reception as well, and kudos to the organizers and all the volunteers and the sponsors for making this family event more and more popular each year. Operational budget for three days, and then Downtown Enhancement Project Council Workshop, followed up by workshop in the evening with Downtown Association members, Parks Naming Ceremony. Again, that was a very, very important event.
Again, kudos to Councilors Thiessen, O'Toole and Rice and Admin. Terry, I guess. What's so good about that is it's a family atmosphere and to see families and the pride of families and their recognition is heartwarming, to say the least. Art Gallery of Grand Prairie Exhibition, I'm on the gallery board, so I was pleased to be there and really pleased to see my colleagues Kevin and Kevin there as well. Council GPRC information sharing was useful, they shared some of their priorities with us and I think that's good for us as we proceed with our advocacy efforts. And then Council Rice and I went to Suxmouth, to the open house for CEO Gary Grant-Gonth's retirement. And so, it was nice to be there and wish her the best. And I also, a little bit late, I attended the meeting with the Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting. I believe there's a proclamation that I just missed as I arrived from the mayor with respect for the UN International Day for Persons with Disabilities. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Councilor Adburn. Councilor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So, I as well was able to attend the Northern Light Show Gala and had the privilege of attending with a couple of friends from Ontario that had come from a larger center. And they were just completely blown away that something like this exists here and they were, you know, found it to be quite the treasure in Grand Prairie. So, it was interesting to experience it with them. On the twenty-seventh, I was able to attend the lunch with GPRC and it was good to see some of their advocacy priorities. And they've been going on a bit of a roller coaster in terms of their funding over the last few years. And so, I know that'll help inform us as we meet, if we meet with different ministers in our advocacy efforts. And in the evening, I was able to attend the Peace Health Advisory Council meeting. I was able to get a bit of an update on some of the health priorities that are taking place in the region, as well as the hospital. Two things that stood out for me there was, when it comes to mental health, they actually had the person in charge of the mental health for the region here. They let us know that they're currently looking for two more psychiatrists for Grand Prairie. So, it was good to see that they're recruiting there and that it's being addressed. Also, the other one that's a bit staggering is that Grand Prairie is currently short eight family physicians. And so, they're currently actively trying to recruit physicians to fill those roles. And they've been finding a little bit of success here and there and there's always a little wins, but there's always more to go. So, it's glad to see we have, you know, a group of people that are advocating for that important part of our city. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Tarrant. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Most of the items have already been talked about, but I just want to say I was happy to have gone through a first session of budgeting. It was quite an experience and we all survived, so that was good news. Two of the highlights, though, as were mentioned, was the discussion with the GPRC Board of Governors. It's a great opportunity for the Board of Governors and City Council to discuss priorities for both sides going forward. And I think that another highlight for me definitely was the Downtown Project, the workshop in regards to streetscape and infrastructure and going forward to help facilitate the growth that we can see downtown. So, thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. I think a number of the events that I attended have also been reported on. There's one that I don't believe there are any other council members in attendance, although our city manager was. On the eighteenth, I had an opportunity to present to the Sunrise Rotary Club a little bit about the recent activities at the city. Mostly, I focused my comments on annexation hearings and the annexation process, the budget, which we're sort of right in the middle of or just leading into there. And it was a great reception from the community group. It was interesting to note, there was one question in the open mic or the question and answer session at the end that was actually about regionalization. And so, it's interesting to see those kinds of topics are coming now back to the city of Grand Prairie from the public, which I think is good news that people are thinking in a big picture about governance in our region. With that, I have nothing else to present and I would call our meeting adjourned.